Yeah, two terms.
I understand.
I think it's Jennifer, so I think I just grabbed it, sorry, I think I grabbed your phone, sorry.
You gotta watch her.
Before we get started, well Max, uh, Justin gave Aaron his number so that we'll, we can go ahead and get the coroner's plus salaries and, uh, the on-call, the mental health. What was the number that he came up with, Aaron, on the?
His autopsy fees came for, which is line zero seven one nine, it's actually going to be one thou- one hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty.
Five fifty.
One thirty-four.
Five fifty.
Okay.
And Jennifer's gonna actually do the motion for a full change.
Okay. I made the motion for zero 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 seven minus salaries, minus on-call, the two part-time administrative assistants and mental health, which are gonna be tabled for September, and then changing zero zero five nine, um, to remain the same, sorry, changing zero zero five nine, zero zero six two, and zero seven two zero to remain the same at the twenty twenty-four council group budget. Do you need me to go through each number?
No, but in zero zero five two.
Um.
Zero zero zero.
Yes, sorry, zero zero five, uh, zero zero five two as well, and then changing zero seven one nine to one thirty-four five fifty. Uh, motion approved. And the rest estimated.
Did you say one thirty-four or one forty?
One thirty-four.
Take it.
Three, four, five, fifty.
Second, they're promptly moved, it's seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those papers seem by seven I.
Aye.
All closed, same side. Thank you.
Facilities is zero three eight zero. Are we there?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Max.
All right, good morning, um, first of all, great work with Sherri and John, um, I think we had some productive meetings, somewhat productive meetings, um, we do have some.
That was a quick change.
Yeah, exactly. I gave them the wrong log.
We have a lot of questions too, we don't know, uh, we, we have things budgeted in two different lines, uh, between the jail lit, uh, actually, and general, I think we actually have some at CCD also, so, um, I think those are the main, the key things that we need to figure out, uh, how we're going to fund, uh, the maintenance and janitorial at the, uh, at the Justice Center. So, uh, how, where do you guys want me to start, we just gonna go through my?
County General first.
County General first, okay, so, uh, first thing that is going up in County General would be our maintenance, Justice Center maintenance staff, um, and asking for.
Is that thirty-eight twelve, just for clarity?
Thirty-eight twelve, yes. Um, asking for one additional employee out at the jail, uh, that would be a full-time, uh, county employee, and then we are also looking to do, uh, have contract cleaners out there, um, I believe that's the most efficient way to.
So you're showing going up twenty-four thousand, so is that what you're paying?
Paying what?
Twenty-four thousand, so is that what you're paying another new person?
Is that only one employee?
That's actually just a five percent.
That's just a five percent.
He has, so he's budgeted two hundred thousand under maintenance staff in twelve thirty-three, but surely that's not for one person.
I know.
For one job.
No.
I mean, I would try to spend the twelve.
I can do it for one fifty. Sorry, so.
So Debbie, where, that number actually came from you.
Well, because we, we talked, what number?
The two hundred thousand dollars under that, oh, thirty-eight twelve.
Right, because when we told, when we had our meeting with Sherri and John, you guys talked about having the two that are out there, and then adding two more, plus a po- possible supervisor. So that's where we got the two hundred thousand.
Let me ask you this really quick, are we under, are, are we under O three eight O five?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, yes, we're in both, actually, O three eight O.
So, okay, so, so that's, okay, I understand, okay, yes, so we, we did put two options out there, I guess, is what, what we discussed, so we, we discussed, uh, yes, a maintenance, a, a janitorial supervisor and then two additional janitorial staff, or a contract cleaning company coming in, uh, both options were about the same cost-wise.
Really?
Yeah, so, uh, I had our, the helping hands is who we, who we use now, and, uh, he came out, looked at our square footages, uh, walked the buildings with me, we discussed it, um, we would have two day orders that would be in the jail during business hours, and we'd have one person come in in the evenings and do, uh, do floors in the, in the loud work that would be disruptive during normal business hours, and, uh, that contract was for two hundred and ten thousand dollars was the quote that we were given.
How much?
We actually have that contract cleaning, so we have two ten and contract cleaning, two hundred in maintenance staff.
Yeah, so we need to make a decision on what route we wanna go, whether it's a new, new county employees, or we go with a contract cleaning staff, uh.
Does anybody imagine a contract cleaning staff, you'd normally lock in for a multi-year agreement with contract companies, and they assume, you know, a ton of the liability, the risk, the like.
The hiring, the, the, the staffing and everything, yes, I, I think there's a big advantage to go the contract.
But we went, we went ahead and said, what would, what would the two cost, so that, that's the two ten.
That was the two ten for the contract cleaning.
And then.
So.
The new staffing was gonna be?
The two hundred.
The two hundred.
To staff, to staff it in a similar way was gonna be two hundred, was the number that we put out there.
The four one oh, the one at the bottom, the two hundred at the bottom, Debbie.
So the contract helping hand is gonna be two ten, and then to hire a janitorial supervisor and two staff is gonna be two hundred thousand, is that salary and benefits?
The supervisor, even if you contract, you're gonna have supervisor.
Yeah, so even if we contract, I'm still gonna have, I'm still gonna ask for one additional employee out there for a, for a janitorial supervisor, that way our contract company, our contract people have somebody to go to, and, um, we have a go-to person in the building.
Do the current employees after your filter, with respect to, I mean, they're bringing in these contractors always, and so what are they gonna, what, what, when are they gonna get rid of us from making all contracts?
Our, our county employees out there would still be doing all of our secure areas in the jail, so they would still be cleaning all, uh, all of our areas that we don't necessarily wanna bring those contract people into, uh, so we'd still have the two janitorial staff there, and we'd have two maintenance people out there.
So their morale is?
Yeah.
Current employees, they, they don't feel threatened at all by contract?
Uh, not mine.
You wouldn't want the contract people in the building?
The, sorry, the contract, the contract alone is two ten, or does that include the supervisor that you have?
No, doesn't include the supervisor.
Contract alone is two ten, simply contracting, the two hundred that we put in twelve thirty-three is for the two that are out there, two additional and a supervisor.
So, if we were gonna go with the contract, how much more is it for the supervisor?
Twenty dollars an hour.
What would, what would we budget? What's the total?
I think what we're trying to do is figure out like.
Yeah.
Like, this option's two hundred thousand, this option is how?
How much?
Yeah, she's gonna come up.
Twenty five's eighty.
Twenty eight.
Forty one six would be the base.
The base, yeah.
Plus benefits, so that's another.
Still another thirty.
Yeah.
Other thirty.
Yeah.
But we need to have it in the background.
Right, so we, so we call it seventy grand with the janitorial supervisor with benefits.
Our typical janitorial.
So the two ten plus seventy, yeah.
Eighteen dollars an hour, so I think the two dollars is fair.
So we're like, two hundred versus two eighty.
And not to confuse anyone, but didn't we also talk about the safety element because of the Justice Center and the fact that we wouldn't want not one of our own to at least be supervising?
Yeah, and that's something that we've, that we've talked about, some of the shared part, I, we do prefer to have our, have county employees
Right.
in the secure areas of the jail, the cleaning that we did back there.
Thank you.
Well, either people in our office area, they're gonna need to do background checks.
So everybody that would come, that would be working in the building, would, we would run through your guys' contractor, uh, background checks the same way we did now with all of our contractor.
They body scan everyone that come in?
We, yeah, we can. And, and we absolutely can, because, uh, the building's gonna be set up, uh, every main entrance, there's gonna be a body scanner anyways, or people are gonna be coming in now.
We, I, I, I don't know why we wouldn't scan everybody that comes to the court, well, uh, but I have to admit that, we don't scan everybody, but we should.
Majority of us get scanned.
Majority, majority probably get scanned, but neither here nor there.
Well, I think there's a difference between walking through a metal detector and going to the body scanner.
Well, we don't have body scanners at the courthouse, so.
Are these numbers pretty close to what was projected with the jail study, uh, projection came in?
I can't verify that, I don't know what, I, I don't know what numbers were put towards maintenance, uh, needs that the, that the study was done.
So you said it's in twelve thirty-three, what line is twelve thirty-three?
Twelve thirty-three, maintenance staff is in personal services, so the fourth section now.
Twelve thirty-three.
Twelve thirty-three, and then in the number five, because it's a new line.
Yeah, it's just, uh.
Maintenance staff.
Maintenance staff.
And then the contracting is down below in the next section, Kenny.
Oh, so we gotta.
The two ten and the two hundred, we got it in both places.
That's what we talked about earlier this morning.
So. Sounds like we're leaning towards contract and one, and one.
I don't know, I mean, I, I think it's just good that we, we get out, what, what are the two options?
Yeah.
It's either two eighty for a contract cleaning staff plus the supervisor, or it's two hundred.
Two hundred thousand plus your benefits.
Oh, the two hundred doesn't include benefit, okay.
I was about to say, you still have the benefits, it doesn't include the benefits.
So, would we say?
Which is what, thirty thousand for, that's, but the two people already have benefits, right? So we need to do three, thirty times three is ninety thousand, so it is.
So we call it three hundred versus two eighty?
That, that's the, we were trying to, we're trying to figure out the cost benefit, it's rough.
I, I think really the, the benefit is going with contract employees, it takes some, the.
Liability.
Yeah, and finding, and finding the employees.
I was about to say. Hiring alone, that was.
And, and the guy that we use has a, a good network of people that he can get to come in.
So, my question, just out of curiosity, the, the contract employees that would be coming in, what is their salary compared to salaries that we have within the jail?
That would be with the.
So you know they don't find out?
Yeah, I think.
I get all of that, but.
They already know.
I know, it's not, I'm just last nineteen minutes. Yeah, I'm just curious, just from the standpoint, you know, is there a possibility that'll say, other, my, Max might lose other employees that go to the contract?
Max and I talked about that out in the hall yesterday, and, and I, kinda what, where I came to with it, when you factor in the cost of workers' compensation, because that's not, that's not a factor in there now, they take care of the workers' compensation, and we don't have that figured in as the benefits either, so that's another component that has to be put in, by the time you do that, and the health benefits, and the additional benefits, it's a wash.
No, I just.
Well, I understand, but that needs to be explained to our employees to know, uh, I, I think it needs to be communicated, and that's why I asked Max that, because it had been brought up to me at one point.
There's just a lot of people, all they see is the dollar method.
They look at, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
They don't look at benefits.
They don't look at all the other, I think, we talked, we had that conversation with Chief Deputy Beard, as part of, even the sheriff's conversation, or so he thinks, I, it's, it's your decision, but I, I look at it too, even when it comes to, to hiring, if something happens, no matter what, the contractor's on the hook for finding employees, they're responsible, and at the end of the day, you normally sign a contract with the agency that locks you in for a rate for so many years, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Yeah, like, hey, we're gonna pay this amount for so many years at this dollar rate, then you come after renegotiating.
So Debbie.
Does your supervisor oversee the contracted employees? Yeah, right.
So Debbie, we can make a decision about whether it's three hundred or two eighty, and then.
At about when come off the county jail.
And then we'd take it out of this, and we would put it in, what, twelve thirty-three?
So, so, yeah.
You subtract it from the maintenance staff line in O three eight O, that's five oh six or five oh.
My question is, Sheriff, do you have a, a recommendation or thought, or does it matter to you, out of curiosity?
As long as they're not in the secure area, like Max is saying, I don't really see an issue with it, the background checks, hopefully, we don't need any problems with employees, hopefully, these employees that are coming in are regular basis employees, so we're seeing the same face most of the time. It would be the same employees every day, it would not, they would, um, I mean, less than the office, but, yeah, it would be the same, same employees every day, it would be our regular basis, we would get to know these people just like we do our, our staff.
So, my thought is, if, if, it's pretty much a wash, the sheriff doesn't have an issue with it, I think we put it back on Max, because if we make a decision and it doesn't work out for Max, he's gonna blame us, so let's blame him.
He's okay with that.
Which would you prefer?
Or we could go into this more positively and say, let's try this, but we know we may have to change it next year.
All right.
You said the same thing.
Just in legal terms.
She'd be using that CPA language.
Sorry.
So we'll, we'll go with, I think we came up with three eighty was the.
Two eighty.
Two eighties.
Okay. Contractor.
Uh, and then do we wanna budge that out of the general, I hate to jump on you guys here, jump pages a little bit.
No, that's fine.
We want to take it from the general and move it to twelve thirty-three, if that's what they want to do.
That's fine.
So we'll put that number in twelve thirty-three, this won't be budgeted out of general.
Right.
All right, thank you, so.
So, line three eight one two is, is that a five oh six, can anybody read it?
Where's that?
Two eight.
I don't know.
Wait, where's three one eight two?
Three eight.
Oh, three eight, I go. So the number.
Where'd we go?
For line three eight one two in County General is gonna be two two six four oh three.
Third line up.
Yeah, right here, okay, okay.
In twelve thirty-three.
Two two six four oh three.
Maintenance staff, are we keeping maintenance staff or contract cleaning?
Uh.
Probably easy.
What do you say?
Let's call it the con, let's go contract.
Okay.
So you're still gonna have a supervisor, so you're gonna put that in the, okay. So then in twelve thirty-three, your maintenance staff. Which has the two hundred in it.
Yeah.
Is gonna go down to, what do you want, forty-five? We figured forty-one for the base, forty-five thousand.
Is that in line with the, um.
The salary study?
Maintenance staff, is that, um, hold on, I have it right here.
So it would be a new, so technically that would be a new position that we're creating, so we've made that, so we'd have to look at a supervisory role in our, in line with our, uh.
So we don't have that in here?
Not specifically, it's not.
Right, and it's a salary that we're not going, we'll go to September anyway on that, but I would put it in as forty-five for now, but we'll discuss that.
And we can double check that.
We don't have benefits?
Not yet.
Thank you.
So.
So going back to, uh.
That's in twelve thirty-three, contract clean, it's forty-five thousand.
No, we don't have.
So we took that out?
We went to forty-five.
Going from two hundred thousand down to forty-five for the supervisor.
So Debbie, are we back at three eighty now?
We're back at three eighty.
Three eighty, okay.
So is contract cleaning, is that taken down?
It's going.
What's that line?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Taking it out of here and putting it in twelve thirty-three.
Should we take this out?
Take out the two ten, out of here.
Oh, 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 okay. Where are the two twenty-six for, where do we go?
It's up here.
Okay.
Plus two, plus the.
Maintenance staff, right here, it goes from five hundred to two twenty-six. Two twenty-six.
And then we need to put the contract in.
I think it's, um, saying two ten, and then.
Yeah, okay.
And then forty-five.
Right, so the forty-five is all we had, okay.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Max, in your laundry and cleaning supplies, how come those costs didn't go up in a year?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I think, that is.
No, you're good.
Did you get it, okay, okay.
No, you're good.
It was forty-five thousand, and then, uh, the request for twenty twenty-five is the same, forty-five, how come those costs didn't go up?
So that is our, yeah, that's our supply, that's the, that's our cleaning supply line, uh, so, but in the contract that we have, uh, our contract cleaners are actually gonna be bringing most of their own supplies, um, and we're comfortable with that number right now.
Thank you.
Are, are we good to keep going, Debbie?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, go ahead, Max, back to.
So, the, uh, the next line that is gonna be going up is our fuel line, um, I think we're going from, we're going up to five thousand dollars on that one, um, that's mainly to cover the cost of the fuel and the two new generators that we've, that we have.
Okay.
Um.
You think it'll go up that much?
Those are big generators. N one? Yeah, fuel costs have gone up once too.
Do we go to co-op?
We are.
How big are tanks, are they?
So, I don't know the exact number of gallons they're designed to run twenty-four hour, twenty-four hours on the tank that's on them, those generators fire up and run every Monday, um, as long as we don't have a power outage event, we only fill those tanks, we fill them about every six months, and, uh, so whatever fuel they'll consume on those one-hour runs, when they just do their test runs on Monday mornings or whenever they're.
They actually run it for one hour?
Yeah, they do, they, they fire up and run for about an hour, just, just to run through, get, get up the temperature and do checks, and they do kind of self-diagnosis on.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I got.
Uh, we did go down on our, not by much, five hundred bucks on our weights and measures fuel, um, we're just not using as much there, so we're able, we're comfortable cutting that down. Uh, utilities, I guess is gonna be our next conversation, uh, right now, we have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, budgeted in general, and then we, um, and four hundred and fifty of it.
Sixty, four sixty.
Okay, so we have four, and, and then we can move four hundred and sixty of it to twelve thirty-three if we.
If they choose to.
So, this would, because of the jail lit?
Yes, so that would be just specifically utilities at the jail, so, gas, water, sewage, electric.
So, have the six fifty, how much are we moving, you were questioning?
Four fifty, six.
We move four sixty to twelve thirty-three if we want to.
Did we already put that in there?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
We've got four fifty on ours.
I see the four sixty.
Yes, I, it's four sixty because we added some from the sheriff's department that they had in there, so I rounded that.
You rounded it up, so what will we take this line to, on his, oh, two six?
It's one ninety.
We would take all of it down to the one, we would take it down one ninety?
I'm gonna take that down to what?
One ninety.
One ninety.
And again, that's gonna be an iffy number.
Sure is, yeah.
Right.
We, we don't truly know.
It's an estimate.
We could have to come back and ask for more for that, we don't know.
Right, right. But also, with the jail lit, if we're taking, uh, the, once we get down to the end there, we still might have to move some back.
We still might have to move something, yeah.
Back to County General.
Let me, let me ask this, Sean, you asked for, did you ask for a tool yesterday about monitoring something?
DHVC.
It was HVAC, would that help know what cost is, was that, was that a tool that you asked for, that, who asked for that tool?
Yeah, it was.
So, what he's got is the maintenance over the server and stuff that, for our control system.
All right.
But essentially, we talked through that this is doubling the square footage, and we are at sixteen thousand a month now, we think we'll get to thirty-three, thirty-four a month, and so again, we've got some cushion here, but we don't really know until we, until we get through a year.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, this first year living in the building is gonna really, it's, it's gonna give us a lot, you know, we don't got to get in there, get everything up and operating, and then even as, uh, I, I don't even think when we first go in, it's gonna be a true, I, I think we're gonna be a couple of years before we see what our utilities and stuff kinda play out and a little like.
You go, the sheriff, my, you wouldn't even be fully operational when you go. Yeah, okay.
So, between, between the, uh, whenever that we start getting the new housing unit up, up and rolling and, and work release and all those areas, we won't, we won't know till.
So we take that down to one ninety, okay, sorry, keep going.
So, on the windows, Max, you know, maybe you, we've talked a couple of different times about that, you know, we're looking at a million, it started with, uh, you know, you had a contract for one point two, and now.
So that's the, this is on our twenty twenty-four budget, yeah, so we're, we're currently, we, we have a contract for one point two, uh, we had discussed it, so in twenty twenty-three, we had two hundred thousand dollars that, uh, we were not able to get under contract, so it went back to general.
Right.
And then you guys gave us, uh, a million dollars to add on to that, and then that two hundred thousand dollars didn't get, like I said, it didn't get entered contract, so it didn't get encumbered, so we would ask for that back to fund the, the one point two million dollar window project that we have in the works right now.
Why does it say one point nine?
One point six, yeah, uh, one point six five.
Six.
One point six, yeah.
One point six five.
So we did have an additional ask.
That's under windows.
Was that when we were discussing the, doing the additional work, the, the roofing?
Is that where we put it in windows?
I think that's where that stuff got put into, do, doing the roof project.
Because we changed it to capital projects, not windows, same work.
Can we?
But, we were also discussing that going into.
Into what? Oh, no, CCD.
CCD.
I don't think we're discussing that.
A M P.
But, you know, my main, sorry, my main thing with the windows, I, I'd like, I'd like to see it as the window project, if it's, if it's the one point two, and then the additional, I think should be in a different line, if it's capital room or whatever, just so that we know that's what was supposed to be spent for windows.
I'm with.
Cause is the roof for the courthouse too?
Yeah.
Is it related to?
It was, there were, there were a couple of projects, it was, uh, courthouse was roofing, it was granite work.
So the, but that does not fit under.
You wanted to just see courthouse project?
We have a million dollars in CCD also that we're looking for, for the limestone project.
Right.
Is the limestone project being moved out?
Is it a million dollars? Yeah, it was, uh.
Nine hundred, what?
Nine hundred and something, yeah, and we, we did put a little bit of cushion in it, but not much, I think it was like fifty thousand dollars. But just because by the time we get to that project in June, we also have a grant option that we just found, uh, got a little excited about that one at first, it wasn't, it's a fifty-fifty match, but it's only up to seventy-five thousand dollars, so it will help.
So it can pay for the boom list.
Yeah.
Not gonna pay for much on that project, but yeah.
We'll take it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, so we are in the process of getting that.
That's a project, though, that we need to make sure, actually, we've got enough cushion in, in CCD that we actually will do that project, or whether we hold off, I don't know.
Is the limestone project, is that what? Yeah, I was like, did we approve the limestone project?
We approved CCD, yeah.
No, we haven't got the CCD.
Ah, okay.
So back to, back to this, then, we would have a million two for the windows, and then what would, what would our new line item call?
So you have a million two. And then capital projects would be four hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
And let me clear. Of that four hundred and fifty, can you give us a sheet of what that is? So that, just so that we know, did you add something else there?
Have that four hundred and fifty thousand, have we put these out publicly, please, like, so we don't even have any?
I have quotes.
Instead of one six five oh, it'd be one five two, and then we'll have line item underneath that says capital projects.
Uh, yeah, I have construction quotes. I wouldn't start with it until we got your group funds.
All right, so this part, this part according starts the next year.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
This is probably what the, the roof.
So yeah, so it's the, it's the TPO roofing over the top of the original skylights that are there.
Is this where we put the tarp down? Is this where we put the tarp down? Is this the fix, the leak that we put the tarp down to the?
The dome?
The dome? Is this the fix?
That, that's actually fixed.
Oh, that is fixed?
That is fixed.
Oh.
Um, what that was, was actually a leak in the clock tower. So, the clock tower itself has an asphalt tile roof inside it. And uh, where one of the structural supports came through, it was leaking around that and then tracing down all the steel structure and coming through the stained glass. So uh, we're finally able to get somebody up there on the right day when the wind is blowing the right way to get, to get the leak repaired, so. Um, since they've done that, we have not had any water on the floor there.
Is that a different roof, go ahead.
No, question on the windows, are you starting the project this year? Because you're not gonna need one point two if you're starting that this year. Because you'll pay for some of it this year.
We would.
Because we already have a.
We would encumber.
A million dollars?
There's already a million in the line.
Why wouldn't you just start it this year?
Yes, we are trying to start the project this year.
Are you lying?
So the project is underway. So we have project bid, right now, the project is bid, is bid a little, it's bid actually high right now, so we're working to get it back under budget.
Okay.
Uh, and then, the project, we have a contract on it now. And then once they uh.
So if you start it this year, we don't need a million two for this year.
No.
Right, we just need two hundred.
Because we already did it this year, if you signed a contract.
Yes.
You cover that million, I'm not giving you two point two million.
Is there, so there's a.
True.
Is there a contract signed?
There is a contract.
What's the total amount?
It's a not to exceed one point two million.
So we only need two hundred thousand?
Yeah, that's, that's what it comes back to, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, yes.
She ain't giving you a yes yet.
She ain't giving me a yes.
I know.
He's studying first.
Because if you have a contract, we encumber the million.
Well, well, they recently. I think you don't have that schedule this year if you get the whole project.
He will get that.
CCD. Okay, so, so the million dollars that's in general is also in CCD, when we had our meeting with Sharon. Uh, we, we're gonna wait till we came to the, to you guys to make the decision of if we wanted to fund that out of the general fund or out of CCD. Okay.
First thing, we already got it placed, right?
Not, that, that was the million dollars for the limestone project.
But I thought we have, yeah, we have.
And there's a million dollars sitting for the.
Windows.
For the windows, that's twenty twenty-four money, so twenty twenty-five.
So for the capital, for the courthouse window project, we only need two hundred thousand.
Right.
In that line.
As long as.
Which is now.
As long as the total is one point two, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be.
It is.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay, then yes.
So we'll put two hundred there.
So the capital projects line then could be reduced.
So actually, Kenny wants them separated, because he wants courthouse windows.
Two hundred.
And then we'll make a new line for capital.
And that'll be four fifty, right?
Four fifty for the cap. And then you give us a list of what those are.
Yeah.
So then we'll fund, so then we'll fund the limestone out of CCD.
Yes, and we haven't covered that yet, so.
Justice Center Maintenance.
CCD.
Well, she was questioning why we had a million and two places.
No, no.
No, I don't, no.
Because you have a bid in here also, the, the county general, which we didn't need that many things, so that's why we asked you.
Because we still had it as the window project.
Yeah.
Which listed as two million.
Yeah, you're doing that.
So are we at uh, Justice Center Maintenance, and that's two hundred? Two eighty?
Are we, is it, are we down in Ocrea?
No.
I think we are.
Or, what's the bottom line?
No. Justice Center Maintenance, the two thousand.
That's the, that should be zero, because you put it in twelve thirty-three.
Okay.
The contract cleaning and maintenance should be.
Okay.
And then we added four hundred and fifty for capital projects.
That's just an estimate.
That's the estimate for projects.
We didn't really add, we just separated.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We added.
Just hang, here's a.
Are we good?
Everything's.
I think we're good.
Are we good? Okay. Do we want to make a motion and we say what?
As I say, I'm not ready to vote on this until I have a better understanding of twelve thirty-three, because I saw questions from yesterday about that.
Okay.
Okay.
About twelve thirty-three.
Does it have anything to do with this?
I mean, yeah, because we moved stuff from this to there.
Would you all clear the?
Well.
I mean, my big question from yesterday is, is are we, are we using all the money that's going in here, or are we putting any aside for future? So.
So I would say that maybe earlier, in twelve thirty-three, you know, we're, we'll budget, maybe at the end, maybe we do have to go back and visit both of these, that we have to take some more on the county general, that's a little.
You can still vote on count, on the facilities, county general, so we can go back and change it.
Yes, that's what I would.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and get it kind of nailed down the way we would like to do it, in, in the end, Jennifer, I agree with you. In the end, with the lid, maybe come up with Susan and Debbie saying, okay, wait, we can't fund it all, then we'll have to put some more on the county general.
I just want to be clear that I still have questions about twelve thirty-three, okay?
I agree with you.
Um, I make a motion then to approve, um, or do I need to do a motion for the new line first? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to add a line to zero three eight zero, capital improvements amount of four hundred and fifty thousand.
Second, because we probably moved a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all was a favor, Susan said aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve zero three eight zero, except for salaries and with the following revisions. Uh, we take contract cleaning to zero, we take utilities to hundred and ninety thousand, and courthouse windows to two hundred thousand, and Justice Center Maintenance to zero, and the rest, um, as submitted with the new line.
Do we need to say what the line amount is, of four fifty?
She did.
Sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Facilities, zero three eight zero. Is there any further discussion? If not, all was a favor, Susan, I said aye?
Aye.
Aye. All pose same second.
I am. Max spent a lot of money.
Max, do you hear what we're, what we're doing with salaries? Have you heard? We're looking at a five percent, but we're gonna just, we're gonna really look at them in September. There are some offices that have a few positions that we have to look at due to like the, like spread out of increases to fit within our wage setting, I believe there's um, two in your office, there might be more than two. I have a list.
That we'll look at.
Two, it might just be one position in your office.
So the two that I'm aware of would be our weights and, weights and measures, right?
Below mid?
Some people were, last year, there were some people who were below minimum, and then there were some people who were below mid, and I have, I have a list of that, we're gonna go through it in September.
Your weights and measures part time? And that's something we're gonna have to take up in September anyway.
Yeah. I just wanted you to know that those positions that were put on that, like, spread out over one or two years, we're gonna look at that in September.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
So, what would we go to next?
Uh, CCD.
Eleven thirty-eight.
How many lines do you have in here, Max?
Uh, all of my buildings, so it's.
So to start this second section, it starts with prosecutor buildings.
Yes. Okay.
So, prosecutor annex and highway buildings have all gone down from last year. Um, again, with uh, no decisions yet on how a lot of these buildings are gonna be used after we start, start moving into the Justice Center, people moving around. I'm not making a lot of big moves on these, so it's just our basic maintenance cost is what I've got budgeted, with the exception of the courthouse. Uh, it's, we're trying to get these projects, or some, bring some of it back up into better condition.
Is that the limestone?
So yeah, so CCD, we've got the, a million dollars for the limestone and granite.
Okay.
Uh, I do have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted, but it's under the courthouse line, but it would actually be for the courthouse and this building. For our actual uh, controls upgrade, that would be the hardware for the upgrade.
The HVAC controls?
HVAC controls, hard, hardware upgrade.
But that's also on the ARP project list.
Mm-hmm. What, what, what page is that then?
It's on the very first page, it's actually the first highlighted item.
So, so if that gets approved?
If that gets approved, you won't be the.
We'll just script it out. And just, what's the high level of this, on the HVAC control?
Yeah, what you do to get the control?
So, it's a, it's upgrade on the active physical components that's on our, our air handlers and BAV units, and then uh, getting, and then bringing it all in. So right now, we have multiple different systems that are kind of tied together, that don't work real well together, so it's all getting it all under one system.
So it's more efficient and you use less energy at the end of the day, hopefully, I mean.
Um, it, it really gives us more remote control than anything else, we're able to, to see these systems and diagnose and watch how they run from a computer laptop instead of. And when somebody calls for an issue, like if you guys recall, you know, if this room wasn't cool in the way it should, we can pull it up, look at it real quick. And then uh, either share that with our vendor or come over and do something with it ourselves.
To make it that as efficient, just for, let's give you kind of a quick bird's eye view.
It could lead to efficiency.
And, and a lot of this stuff is getting outdated, that, that's on, that's in these, that was originally installed on, the, just the parts are getting hard to find.
Will it drive across our HVAC building?
We'll see a huge change here.
So the question there is.
What, what we say, so that's actually a new unit in this building?
No, I get it, I just.
So do you want to take the one twenty-five out, or do you want to leave it in?
Far as.
For the HVAC? Do you want to take it out until? I've reached out to Jewel, he's trying to reschedule his day tomorrow to be here for ARP discussion, so that we may not have to have special meeting on Tuesday. So, I don't have that confirmation yet, he said he'd let me know as soon as he can rearrange the schedule, so it could be something that can be discussed tomorrow.
And why would we leave out the one twenty-five, I'm just asking?
Because it's on the ARP list, and if you approve that reclamation.
Oh. That's neat, hit me over the head, okay, thank you. Slow, it's uh, one. And then, I guess just the nine hundred thousand, you know, you went into detail with me, and it's just a high level there, it's replacing that ceiling granite, replacing and sealing the granite around the three entrances and the tuck point cleaning, that's the nine hundred.
Yeah, so, so what would we be doing on limestone project would be, it would be replacing the granite uh, at the three entrances, the east, north, and west sides, if you go and look at it, it's almost falling, it's just falling apart. And then the rest of the limestone, we would be patching, repairing places that need repairs, and then also tuck point and recalling. We're starting to see, it's been a number of years since this has been done, and that stuff is starting to peel and have some issues, there's also some areas that have cracked, but they're gonna actually remove sections of limestone, granite, and then rebox it.
Is that with the grant, the, the grant, the ma, fifty fifty match up to seventy-five, is that for that or for the roof?
Uh, the, that would be for the limestone project.
Got it. So.
And then we also did raise our jail maintenance line uh, to two hundred thousand dollars.
Two oh five.
Two oh five. Two oh five, yeah, sorry.
That, and that's just maintenance on?
That's routine maintenance, that's our, that's where, where we pay all of our contract services out of, uh, for uh, elevator inspections, uh, HVAC, our uh. I, I mean, that's where everything comes out of, just for the general maintenance of that building.
So a portion of this, can it just go into the jail lit, since it's maintenance?
Yeah, but there's no room.
No room for it.
There is.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
We can have some of it in there, don't we?
Yeah, we actually budgeted that in both.
Yeah, we did. Right.
Building of repairs upgrades, uh, line in twelve thirty-three.
And, and these just estimates are like, hey, we know this is coming because we've already gotten these.
It, it, it's pretty accurate to what we're doing now. Uh, we, there is some cushion built in because just to what we don't know going into the extra hundred thousand square feet we've added.
Is this the one though, where there were some knowns that were adds, like the tanks that have to be cleaned up?
Yeah, I, yeah, we, we have additional um, tanks that'll have to be some, that, that'll have to be pumped out, I mean. Coroner's office is actually a good example, we'll have to pump the uh, tank from that building probably monthly, I think we're looking at right now, and we'll have additional grease traps and stuff from the garages. Um, as well as the uh, separators on our stormwater system, that'll have to get cleaned.
That's part of this line item, right?
What's that?
That's part of this two oh five, okay.
And either the coroner's office, that would be biohazard, let you pump it out of that tank, or is it potentially?
Potentially. Um, so, that's how it's labeled right now. We know from discussions with coroner and other places that it's not treated that way now. Body waste, not to get too far in detail.
Right.
Um, but, because I think it was labeled biohazard because they were under the impression that they would be using preserving additives in that building, and it's not what our filter does.
Okay.
I don't, I don't get too far into these.
I think we're far enough, yeah.
So.
What else is?
My recommendation of this one is, is, it's the first time I just heard about the limestone, and I'd, I'd at least like to have a nice to think about it, and, and that's something tomorrow that we could uh, bring up at CCD, we'll, we'll, it's gonna be in this budget again tomorrow, so.
I, I just. For you, I'm sorry.
It's just, it's just something that just kind of caught me off guard, I don't, I probably, Sherry and Dan heard it, but I, I just had it, so.
What, what exactly is, I, I have heard.
What's that?
The lines, like what do we build, the lines?
Do you have any pictures or anything?
Go out and look at the, go out and look at the building.
If you look at the east side door, there's, the steps are, the steps are feeling incredible.
Wasn't it in the thing that you sent us like two years ago too? I still have it, I can circulate it, if you guys want it again.
Is there a preventative maintenance study with respect to limestone of the courthouse and the key bank building, I know.
So we replaced a lot of the limestone, we replaced all the limestone at the key banks, yeah, the base limestone, and yeah, I mean, and this is all part of it.
A million dollars is a big number.
It is a big number, I'm aware of it.
Okay.
So are we leaving the two fifty in twelve thirty-three as well as CCD?
Two oh five.
Yeah, the two oh, the two oh five.
We have engineering and architecture for two fifty and twelve thirty-three.
We're in eleven thirty-eight, sorry, where, where are you?
Yeah, we have them in both places.
Okay.
Twelve thirty-three.
What do you have in twelve thirty-three, that's one?
I'm at eleven thirty-eight.
Yeah, what's, what's engineering?
I know, but she's telling us to go to twelve thirty-three.
That's not.
That's not yours either?
We don't have that.
What one was it, Debbie? What, what line on twelve thirty-three?
The very bottom.
On the engineering and architecture.
Yeah. That's not yours either?
So two fifty?
We just striked it.
Yeah.
Nobody knows.
I'm glad it's written.
I'm sure it's written. Is yours?
I don't know what that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference is.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll talk about it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Probably.
So what do we want to do on eleven thirty-eight?
Do we want to move all of the building equipment upgrades and preventative maintenance stuff from CCD to twelve thirty-three, or do you want to?
I think we probably.
I think she said we.
CCD, shouldn't we?
I would leave it in CCD.
Or.
Yeah. So we'll leave that in CCD.
And do you want to reduce the one twenty-five? Do you want to take the one twenty-five out? You can always add it back in if you don't approve it, the reparation for the ARP.
Why don't we leave it and remove it if it's approved?
I think, I yeah, I guess we're, I would think that we're gonna approve it. I don't see a reason why we wouldn't, so I'll take it out.
Yeah.
I I think we'll take it out.
So that number will go down to one, one, zero, 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 zero.
Eleven thirty-eight, twelve twenty-five is? Courthouse building, twelve twenty-five.
Does it have the limestone granite and the HVAC at one twenty-five? One, one, zero, zero.
Eleven.
One point one.
Instead of one, one, two, two.
Do you know, we won't go ahead and blow it on that one because it's got the limestone in it. So I'd like to hold off.
Yeah.
Just hold on for a minute.
Uh so we, that it's the report from twenty twenty-one, right?
There was a report.
Is it that one that has the?
If we get that in here early, it'll also go, if you want to email it to us.
It's probably in our capital improvement plan.
Thank you, I appreciate it. This is the first time I've heard about a million dollar capital expense for this year. So I was just asking, what is, like, help me understand, hey, what are we doing? You know, like last year you guys came in, the courthouse, there was a very thorough explanation. I think even the judges came in and said, so the windows are drafty, she has a hard time hearing.
So so like I said.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry.
Debbie and I were like, we need a reason.
Can't hear anything. And I'm like, this is literally the first time today, I'm like, oh, we're spending a million dollars proposed on limestone. I'm like, just help me understand.
It's it's replacement of the granite on all three entrances from the of the east, north and west sides. And then the entire building will get uh, the limestone will get washed, pressure washed. And then all of the spots that are cracked or spalling will get repaired along with some more uh in-depth repairs from cracking. And then we're also going to do all the tuck point and recalling of the limestone.
Yeah, and it is in the paper telling report.
I'll I'll send it up to you, I mean, I'll if you want to look it over, but I am the it's the same company that has done our limestone work on this building and the Key Bank building. So.
Just like I said, it's the first time, I just.
Yeah.
It is my first time hearing today. Today, this is in this in this setting, it is my first time hearing about a million dollar capital expense, so.
But it's in that report.
I get that, Sherry. What I'm saying, it is my first time hearing about us spending a billion dollars. I know your delay is uh.
No, that's fine.
It may be fine to you, but what I'm saying is.
No, I mean, your explanation's fine.
Okay, but I'm just asking for, because I keep hearing the chatter back and forth, like I'm just saying, if it's a million dollars being asked, I have no problem supporting it. It's the first time that I'm hearing about the expense, so I would just like to know because a million dollars is a lot.
Sure.
Thank you for the explanation.
So with that, do we have anything else that we need to touch?
I think I have the list of everything that needs to be done, if you want me to read that.
Share it.
So just.
I do have a question in CCD. Are you the long range capital plan or Zach Mitchis? Go ahead. So long range capital plan is at the top section, very last line for twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, that don't use that for uh consultants?
Bond payments.
Which one did I?
Where's that?
Bond payments, very last line on the second page.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see it. I don't see it.
Which one?
Uh eleven thirty-eight, but I don't see it. I don't see the long range capital plan.
These two capital coin bond and let revenue bond of twenty seventeen.
We don't really have twenty.
Did you go what?
Interest.
I thought she said twenty-five.
The twenty-five thousand is the first section, Sherry, first section, last line.
The long range capital.
Got it.
Twenty-five thousand. You say you've got a motion, Jennifer?
Nope.
You think that's good?
Well, she said she did, just the second.
No, I said a question. Um I'll try.
Okay.
Or do you not? I mean, you don't have to make a motion on CCD yet because we're still on things.
Right, because we will be touching it.
Uh let's table it then.
Do you need to sleep?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that we need to approve or max right now?
Do you have anything else for us?
As far as CCD or keep going?
Totally.
And can I actually, this you asked on the the is the limestone, is that project locked in on the rate? Because I know as far as the the time track?
I have a a construction estimate on it.
Oh, okay, all right. Do we need to cover any additional funds for it?
Unless he has a contract.
What else? What else did you have? Did you have anything else?
But if there was.
Nothing else in CCD.
Twelve thirty-three, no?
But if there was, if he got a contract knowing that it was scheduled for next year, we could have come up.
Right.
God, if we took this two hundred fifty thousand off this.
Well, I was thinking kind of what happened with the windows.
Yeah.
For the end of the year.
I don't plan on moving forward that until we're approved.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have something else in twelve thirty-three for Max?
Twelve thirty-three? We talked about the, we talked about the four six twenty-eight.
We have trash and shred, trash hauling and shredding.
Any other questions? Did we take the the two hundred fifty?
We're on twelve thirty-three.
Now I put a question mark there because we're not sure where we're gonna work.
So shredding and trash hauling.
We couldn't verify where it was allocated.
Those are those are.
Who was allocating it?
The storage.
Make sure I put the fuel station.
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
They've already done a contract, they're studying it.
We have commercial building or two.
Any other questions we need right now?
And anyways, it's over forty-six twenty-eight, uh we've actually gone down.
Forty-six twenty-eight.
Forty-six twenty-eight.
So uh forty-six twenty-eight, we've got our utilities line. We're going up to seventy-five thousand on that one.
But didn't you just say you went down?
I look, yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You heard down and got excited.
I did.
What are these utilities for?
Key bank. This one is key bank.
So it's going up by twenty thousand.
Okay, so the utilities, the zero zero two six, our current revenue for the Key Bank building is not going to support the payment. So I'd like to make a suggestion of moving that utility line out of the forty-six twenty-eight to either general or CCD.
Say that one more time.
So the fund itself, what they receive in rent money does not support the bond payment that comes out of here plus his expenses. So unfortunately, his expenses have to be put on hold because the bond payment has to be, right, so.
So but if we move the seventy-five thousand for utilities out, the building will be will will take care of itself.
But the actual utility cost isn't going up.
Uh utilities have gone up, yes.
Yeah, so it's still gonna go up, so that's seventy-five thousand.
We'll still be paying seventy-five thousand dollars for utilities for that building next year, but we just need to move it out of the forty-six twenty-eight.
Shouldn't the cost go down utilities next year since a chunk of people moving out? I mean, shouldn't?
Theory's good, yes.
I don't wanna call it a theory, I'm like, if I was living in a house.
Yes, I I mean, I don't know. The building's still gonna, so okay, so the building's still gonna be occupied. We're still gonna be using uh power, we're still gonna be heating and cooling the spaces.
That's right, gotta maintain.
Um we're not just gonna shut them down and not use them. I mean, we'll have more problems if we do that, so.
I mean, people may be moving from the upper floors, but the main floor's still gonna be occupied, right, and?
Uh so your first, third and fifth floors of the building will still be occupied? Uh with um county offices, agents.
I'm not saying that people wouldn't be there, I just didn't think we would have a twenty thousand dollar increase.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
So the the cost of our utilities, the just the cost of utilities has gone up.
Okay.
So, yes, we may see some decrease in usage and hopefully that results in, but what we're actually paying per unit has gone up as well.
It's a crazy increase though. I mean, you know, relatively speaking, that's still a lot to see in one line item for.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm not, I get what you're saying, but I'm like, a twenty thousand dollar increase is.
Who's the, who who's the utility?
Lebanon.
Lebanon, you tell.
Yeah.
And they go up about every year.
Can I ask a question? Because it looks like you've only used eighty-six percent from that fund so far this year. Is it something that's like, like more is paid at the end of?
So it's it's forty-six twenty-eight, I believe. We didn't have the money. We we haven't been using that fund because it wasn't, it the money wasn't there to you.
We had to.
So I don't think that's an accurate.
Because we didn't have enough money to make the bond payment, so we had to let it build up, so they weren't unable to use it for a couple of months.
Got it.
Wow.
Okay, so.
If we need to, uh we can pull utility bills for that building and come up with what we spent this year so far.
I just think. Curious what you've spent so far this year and what you spent total. I mean, I think we've all seen our utility bills go up, so I'm not like doubting you on that, but it would just be um it would just be interesting to see and helpful.
Yeah, we're gonna cost today.
Thank you. I'd be curious what total last year was too, if you have that, only if it's easy to access.
I would say our utility line in general.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with utilities going up. I'm not, I'm not, I get that. We've always said, I'm just like, man, twenty grand, same people move out.
It's almost, yeah, it's almost double. I mean, it's 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 half of what, it's almost half of what the bill was last year.
Right.
Went from fifty-five to thirty. It's a lot.
So this one we need to make a motion, uh removing the utilities out of out of this.
For what fund are we moving to?
That's when we gotta decide either county general or CCD.
I would say zero zero two six in general.
Oh, you want the sixty?
County general. I don't like, I don't, I would rather be in county general.
So move it to?
We'll see. So CCD, CCD is.
So it's fifty.
So which what what which one, where would the three hundred thousand down?
That's where our cash balance would be.
The potential cash balance at the end of twenty-four, five, twenty-five.
For CCD?
For CCD, so you've got uh two point eightish coming in for going out.
And what about the other one?
I mean, general's out of balance.
General's out of balance.
We cut, we cut a lot from zero three eight oh though.
Well, right, but you may have to move some back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't really know. So I I'd really like not to put it in county general if you're gonna move some of that back, but that's.
It's fine.
If you don't hold, so you can figure out what else is going on, but.
How good would it go on to CCD in order that at least has a positive cash balance?
I mean, the the balance for forty-six twenty-eight right now is sixty-seven thousand dollars, so it's not.
Yeah.
It's not enough cash.
If we move it to county general with an asterisk next to it, that we need to circle back to this once we figure out.
Sure.
I just personally like it in county general, because it would, it's what it's used for.
Sure, let me get back to it.
What fund do you?
Forty-six twenty. Okay, I make a motion to move the utilities line, and here's zero zero two six, from four six two eight to zero three eight oh.
Oh, oh, two six.
Oh, oh, two six. Zero three eight oh dash.
Yeah, move line zero zero two six utilities to county facilities, zero three eight oh. Fund, zero three eight oh.
So the line in facilities will go up to two sixty-five, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, or you still with this?
Could probably move, is there a second?
Second.
Could probably move the second, any further discussion? If all those favors seem to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All post same side. Thank you. Now we still need a motion to hold the rest of this fund.
Yeah, I'm good. Yeah, I've got two other lines that went up and down, but not by much. It was our elevator maintenance for the building. Uh it went from seventy-eight hundred to eighty-five hundred uh to contract increase and then emergency equipment systems has gone up to thirty-five hundred dollars as well. Anticipating some additional cost for replacement of fire extinguishers and safety life safety seven.
Now you're still at a hundred percent for elevator maintenance right now?
Because it was paid out of that fund, it was paid out of.
Out of.
Is there a?
But this is zero percent.
Well, then we have, we have two or three that didn't change, but yeah.
So with that seventy-five thousand being moved out of there, we're gonna be okay in this budget?
We should be, we watch it. Between our office and Lori, we watch it pretty close.
So do we have a motion to approve forty-six twenty-eight with the seventy-five thousand being moved out of this?
Uh uh I move that we approved forty-six twenty-eight uh now as submitted minus the uh line zero zero two six elevator move.
Probably move, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those favors seem to say aye?
Aye.
All right, all post same side, thank you.
Do we need to go back to zero three eight oh and um make a motion to increase utilities to two sixty-five? Or is that?
That was kind of your first.
Was that included in the motion to move it? Okay.
I just want to say thanks to Max and Lori, because you guys worked hard and we made you put this in multiple places, so.
Yeah.
Thanks for walking John and I through it. Were you pulling it?
No.
She said it earlier, I was like, okay, I know. Your job or goal is to get done by twelve fifteen and catch us up.
What's that? Uh if you guys want to walk around, I'll get that, I'll get that, just shoot in text. Yeah, pick it up early.
Would you guys like to do Katie's uh alcohol drop?
Yep, for sure.
Is that the evening?
I know, it's the easy one. Yeah, let's do it, let's.
What number is that?
What's the number?
Uh forty-nine twenty-one.
Forty-nine twenty-one.
Only yours, Katie.
All me, okay, good morning. Um so this will be my first request as your A D director and I made a couple of changes. Judge Credit, who ever since it approved all of it, um the biggest one is moving the funds from the eighty-five fifty-one jail program. Historically, that's been paid by a grant from community corrections, so I was just going to move that up to the personal services line to help fund our crack related instructors. And my goal, and Judge Credit is on board with this, would be eventually maybe hiring in a part-time um peer support coordinator, so that's what I would use that money for. And then the other increases, I just added some funds, um increase it by five thousand for training and development for our annual training. Um and then these fees are from alcohol and drug clients. It doesn't um take any funds from the county and then the funds have to be used to serve as the alcohol and drug clients.
Yeah.
I do believe it's pretty something.
We just are passed through, right, with these?
Um it's not really passed through because we actually have, we budgeted, yeah, it's fun to stay in the county.
Anyone have any questions?
Jennifer's hungry, Phil.
Well, it's just, it's it's grant, no, I don't know if grant is the right word.
It's divided.
Yeah.
By clients, yes.
And that's all this money can be used for anyway. Yep.
Is there a motion there?
I make a motion that we approve four nine two one as presented.
Second.
Second.
Could you probably move the second? Any further discussion? If all those favors seem to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All post same side?
Oh, two three five.
Oh, right. Oh, two three five?
Oh, two three.
So this hasn't changed a lot.
Yeah.
Oh, two three five.
Two thousand point five department requests, we put eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. That is the minimum uh two thousand point five state standard probation officers. That included a three percent raise from two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five, so my actual request, if you guys are willing, would be to add an additional three percent to that to make up the five percent of the rest of the county.
Just um, I think I probably say this every year, but um probation is paid pursuant to statute, the state sets that, we don't have a choice in that. Historically, they've never asked for the raise that the county gives on top of that and. They've never asked for the raise that the county gives on top of that. And so I personally think that's fair, but we're, um, good. To an extent, we're discussing salaries in September.
Yeah, so that request is just to match what everyone else is getting.
Yep.
Five percent. Um, the other, do you need the number with the two percent added?
This is just the.
That's just the midday twenty-seven thousand is the.
What the three percent is? Okay. I'll make a note of that.
Okay. And then the only other line that we're asking for an increase is in the juvenile detention, uh, services line. For the past six years, we've asked for ninety. We usually come pretty close to that every year. Covid was a slow year, obviously, but we're usually pretty close to the ninety grand. Uh, between August of two thousand twenty-two and August of two thousand twenty-three, uh, we completed thirty-two screenings on juveniles. Uh, that number has doubled from August of twenty-three to August of twenty-four. So that's why we're asking for an additional increase in that line.
What's the biggest uptick that happens to support or carry on our strengths on it?
Uh, I mean, more all enforcement, making more contact with juveniles, more juveniles moving into the county. It's just, we follow the same procedure with our screening tools to try to keep as many kids as possible out of detention. It's just simply an increase in numbers at this point.
Got you. Nope, thank you. Question, you mind?
Now, is there a motion?
Um, I'm, uh, make a motion to, well.
Less salaries.
Less salaries.
Even, okay, even, okay. Um, I make a motion to approve as presented minus salaries.
Second. If it probably moved a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those favors, if I say aye?
Aye.
All close, same side. Thank you.
Thank you. Which fund do you want to get next?
Utility.
Give you the, the opioid grant?
Sure.
Funds twelve thirty-seven, twelve thirty-eight.
Twelve what?
Twelve thirty-seven.
And twelve thirty-eight.
Twenty-seven.
Twelve thirty-seven and twelve thirty, one restricted, one unrestricted.
Twelve thirty-two.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the opioid settlement.
Okay.
Any big changes to them?
Uh, no big changes on these. Uh, the council voted two years ago to pay, um, probation officers with CCDs credentials. An extra five thousand dollars on top of their salary. They'll be the section credentials. Uh, there's plenty of money in those funds. I think the distribution is sixteen years. So that even if we hire more officers in the future, I think we've got enough to help us maintain that for sixteen years.
Lori?
I'm moved to approve twelve thirty-seven and twelve thirty-eight as presented.
Second. If it probably moved a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those favors, if I say aye?
Aye.
All close, same side. Thank you.
Could you get two thousand next? That is our user fee's account.
Two thousand?
Yep, two thousand.
Take over for the nine-nine, too. Got it.
I guess.
Got it. Got it.
Thanks for saying. Um, this pretty much stays the same. This base were our administrative assistants. Uh, it's, by statute, this, this fund is supposed to be used to supplement probation officer salaries, um, and run all of this essentially. The only line I've added this year is the probation officer administrative assistant line. I'd like to put twenty-five thousand in there. At some point, when we get to the new facility, we'd like to hire a, a part-time probation officer system. Uh, just some of the day-to-day operations.
It's all.
That's all.
Yeah.
Just. This is our user fee money that.
Yeah, this is all collected by clients.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I care, I see Wyatt, are you just anticipating going to new facility reason why there's an eight thousand dollar increase in office supplies?
That's what I saw too.
Uh, yeah, we run, we run that pretty dry every year, and luckily, if we run out, Michael's willing to pay for some of our office supplies too.
Michael, that's very nice of you.
He, he is, he helps us. Call Daddy Michael. Um, so yeah, I would like to have enough in there to obviously pay for our own office supplies.
And I, and I was, I, these remote access cards?
So some of these lines are really old.
You add for two thousand dollars more.
Are those your cards to?
Is that for the new building to get in and out or something, swipers?
We honestly had to screen that line overall. We've always asked for, in case we ever need a, um.
If you've only used thirty-eight percent of it.
I agree. Is there?
I'm sorry, remaining is thirty-eight percent of it.
Yeah. Is there if there's ever a need for it?
What is it for? What do you, what are?
Oh, it's, uh, it says in cell, that's basically for a cell phone or Verizon bill.
Remote, okay. Oh, those are like air cards and stuff, like.
And our, and our county phones and.
Yeah.
Did it need to increase two thousand or?
So again, usually, it's because both probation and community corrections have a lot of cell phones, hotspots, that sort of thing, so we gotta split that.
Okay. That's fine. And you only have thirty-eight point two percent of money this year?
Okay. Any other?
Is the user fee fund?
Yeah.
I mean, is there a lot of money in that user fee fund?
Uh, there is a cash balance. It's almost more than one.
Yeah, I don't see it out there.
He doesn't cash balance for this.
Well, I would, but.
It, it's around.
My computer won't work.
What'd you say?
I feel like cash balance.
I know, it'll be all the.
Can you rub my computer shower?
He thinks it's two point fifty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
It's a cash balance, yeah.
Okay. The only thing that you, can we, do we, do we have to wait on this one for the new salary, I mean, for the new position to? Yes. We did have to wait on.
Well, I think. There are some salary lines in there.
There are some salary lines?
Yeah.
But there.
You can approve all of this.
Okay.
How moved do we approve fund two thousand, uh, estimated minus the salary?
Second.
If it probably moved a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those favors, if I say aye?
Aye.
All close, same side. Thank you.
That's a plan one hundred. This money's collected from clients. That's part of their court costs. Um, and we collect, we collect that money, manage this fund. Once a year, I got it to the treasurer, and that shows to basically all the other probation officer races that are mandated. So I write approximately sixty thousand dollars back to the treasurer annually. And that's all I comes out with.
I make a motion to approve twenty-one hundred as presented. Second.
If it probably moved a second, is any further discussion? If not, all those favors, if I say aye?
Aye.
All close, same side. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I skip twenty-fifty.
Twenty-fifty.
Yeah.
Correct date.
Two oh five.
This, this fund does, the juveniles don't, don't tend to pay their fees, so this isn't a very large fund. Um, so it's just got some office supplies, um. Pardon me. I did add an extra, uh, under the probation officer line. I put three thousand dollars in there because I know you mentioned on call earlier, did for. So we do on call a little bit differently. Um, we got Justice Assistant Chief, and he helps with the juvenile probation department. Then we have two juvenile probation officers. Based, they're on rotation month to month of being on call. Right now, um, for two thousand twenty-four, while we're doing, we don't want to paying them the two hundred dollars. A week for being on call, because if there's a juvenile that needs, um, hooked up on a retention bracelet, they have to go to the office to do that. That might change in two thousand twenty-five, depending on what happens. Michael funded it. He has the opportunity to have staff there to make those hook up. But I just want a little bit there just in case to be able to pay that for a main call.
So does that go until September? No, okay. I make a motion to.
Question, I see first. Is it nine thousand on rent expenses going away?
It is. They.
So by statute, we've kind of been doing this wrong over the last.
Right.
Ten years. So by statute, no, nothing, rent cannot come out of, you know, the adult or the juvenile. And so we've had discussions with commissioners that we're not gonna be paying rent out of the facility. Okay. Yeah. Sorry.
That is in the state statute.
Yeah.
We figured that out earlier.
Okay. Now, break.
Make a motion to approve twenty-fifty as presented.
Second.
If it probably moved a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those favors, if I say aye?
Aye.
All close, same side. Thank you.
Forty-nine, twenty-seven, is that one?
Yep, forty-nine, twenty-seven, that's for, uh, so if there's an interstate compact, a probation of the felony, let's transfer out of state. There's a fee they have to pay. To do that transfer process, that's where that money's coming into this account. It's not very much. It's usually, usually around fifteen hundred dollars we collect. This year, we've spent twenty-five hundred dollars, so I've actually had to move some of those extradition bills to bring a client, if they get in trouble in the other state, to bring them back to Indiana. I've had to pay those out of user fees. I don't know if that might be a discussion for the future to have a line in county general, because those can add up pretty quick, and I'm happy to screen to find money to pay those. But, but for now, I just have twenty-five hundred in there.
Will you make notes of that for us to discuss next summer?
Yep.
Or like leading up to next year's budget?
Yes, so twenty-five hundred just for the first six or seven months, and I think that's going more. If we keep getting more clients, like five percent, that's something hard, so.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve, um, forty-nine, twenty-seven as submitted.
Second. If it probably moved a second, any further discussion? If not, all those favors, if I say aye?
Aye.
All right. All close, same side. Thank you.
I think that's it.
Ninety-one, twenty-five?
That's his.
That's Michael's.
Oh, yes. Yeah, that's many corrections.
I thought.
Is that it for you?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you all. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Some of us put catheters in. I've got an extra one.
You got a focus on that Range Rover seat.
If you pay extra, they'll provide somebody to chew up for. Give it right back to him.
Oh, yeah.
He's sixteen days in Italy and he gives me a hard time about my Range Rover. And he's got a Cybertruck on, on, uh, on order. So we gotta, we gotta give it back to him, don't we, John?
Awesome.
Really? Really, Kenny?
Eleven twenty-two.
Hurt pigs.
Twenty-two.
Sure.
Ninety-one, twenty-two, is that what you said? Eleven twenty-two.
Oh, eleven twenty. Okay, thank you.
Eleventh month of the year and twenty-second date is a phenomenal. On the record.
Sorry. I am too.
When the king was born.
Right. Sir, what was yours?
Uh, eleven, twenty-two. Um, also, I just want to apologize, my voice, I have really allergic to poison ivy, and I got a bunch this weekend, so it's all my eyes and my mouth all over me, so. Don't sound right, that's why.
If I want to move away.
Kind of struggling this morning. The salary line in eleven, twenty-two actually went down from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Um, we've been able to move some salaries to other grants that we've been able to receive, so that amount went down. Uh, I think the only thing that substantially increased would be our GPS line. Uh, it's just becoming more expensive to pay the GPS vendor for their services. Plus, we're adding a little bit to their contract to try to make sure that we're doing an adequate job of supervising our clients. Um, also increased our training amount, she's becoming, yep.
Are you able to pass those fees off for GPS, or do you have to lock in, like, hey, that rate has to stay consistent with kind of, you know, your offenders for so long?
Uh, it's really, you mean how much we're charging our clients each day? Um, so the advisory board evaluates that every few years. It's been pretty consistent, I think, probably since eighteen or nineteen.
Okay.
Um, that fifteen dollars, it was very much an hourly, it used to be, they paid a certain amount or their hourly rate per day, but that was actually an accounting nightmare within my office to be trying to figure out like, oh, they got a raise, and I need to change how much they're getting paid every, like, it's kind of a disaster. So the advisory board made it that fifteen dollars across the board. In twenty eighteen or nineteen, when that was approved, that was probably pretty fair. Um, I've done some soft looking at other counties. I think we're probably pretty middle of the road on what we charge. We don't want it to be to the point where our clients have nothing left at the end of the week, so that fifteen dollars seems to be pretty manageable, fifteen dollars per day. Um, I think in another year or two, it'd probably be time again to have that conversation with the advisory board about maybe bumping that to seventeen or eighteen, but.
That's good. I, just because you mentioned like the cost is going up, I don't know, do you think it's arbitrary to say, all right, well, we're automatically passing that cost up?
I can't arbitrarily say that. I'd have to get permission from the board, but I just still think at this point, based on what most of our clients are making per hour, it's, it makes sense. We're able to pay our bills, um, but they're able to live as well.
And when, when, um, that was presented to the board in eighteen or nineteen, there was pushback on increasing it from, I think it was twelve.
Yeah, it used to be twelve or fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it, it, again, the conversation, though, a lot of our clients, fortunately in Boone County, are, they're making twenty, twenty-two bucks an hour, twenty-five bucks an hour at business parks and the factories and stuff. So we could talk about moving it up a little bit, but.
Okay, okay.
It would just, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I increased the amount in our training line a little bit. It's like everything else, it's just the amount of our trainings. The cost is going up, plus our number of staff needing training has gone up. Um, and you'll see that there's still a lot of that money remaining for this year, but almost all of our training is in the fourth quarter.
Okay.
So I just haven't done it yet. We haven't used it yet. We do one conference in the spring, and then the other three conferences we do are all in the fall, so we'll get ready to spend a bunch of that money the next six weeks.
So you doubled your repairs with equipment line, right?
Oh, oh, five, two?
Yes, uh, that's because our GPS monitoring system, our old contract, the vendor, um, they ate the cost of anything. When our equipment got damaged or lost, our new vendor charges us for it. So I want to make sure I have enough budgeted to be able to pay for any broken GPS units or lost GPS units.
And again, back to my question.
We then file some of the court and get restitution, so we get, this is a lot of user fees.
Okay.
It's just basically having the money in place to be able to write those initial checks.
And two.
And then if things go well, the client should pay us back for that.
Well, just like drug testing, that's something that they pay for too, right? Yeah.
Well, not, no, it's something the advisory board made an incentive a few years ago. We're not charging anything for negative drug screens.
For negative screens, yeah.
Yeah, but now if there's a positive drug screen, that has to be sent to the lab, which is a substantial increase in cost. They are charged for that, but we felt it was valuable for the clients to be rewarded. Espe- I mean, the, some of our clients are being tested multiple times per week, and if they're, if they're clean, we don't feel like we should be further punishing them. Like, that's just sort of an incentive for them doing what they're supposed to be doing, so.
So speaking of which, is drug, I see drug test.
It was paid out of forty-nine, twenty-two. Is that right?
Before.
Oh, you just moved it over. Okay, all right.
Yeah, this eleven, twenty-two is a new fund this year because the state made us change our phone number.
Yeah. So what the state is requiring them to do now is to have two funds per every fund they have.
Really?
So we have an odd-year fund and an even-year fund, and we have to go back and forth.
But is that because of the budget cycle, the way that this?
No, it's for their auditing purposes.
It's all for the grant. Eleven, twenty-two should stay permanent because that's our project income, but everything that's a grant, so that at the end of twenty-four, they aren't gonna audit that until the middle of twenty-five. Then they'll be able to see exactly what dollars were left in that account. Then, in twenty-six, when they give us our grant money, let's say there's a hundred dollars left in that account, and they award us fifty thousand, they write us a check for forty-nine, nine. And say there's already a hundred bucks in there from two years ago that you didn't spend.
Okay.
So we'll give you your allotted grant minus what should be over there.
Well, I get that. You gotta love our legislature. All right.
They, it used to be you had to write a check and send it back to the state. They, it used to be you had to write a check and send it back to the state. About four or five years ago, they moved to this new model where you got to retain it in the county, but it had to have alternating funds, so every other year, they look and see what should have been left in there, and your grant is less what should have been in there.
That's why we have this new fund. Alright, so you got furniture fixtures also increased?
Yeah, I mean, just desk, office supply, or not office supplies, but desk, that kind of stuff that the staff constantly needs, it's just expensive, and you go through it pretty quick.
So, let me ask you about FFNE. You're getting FFNE at the new facility. How does that play into this?
Yeah, I don't know, to be honest.
Here, walk back in at like the perfect time in life, tell me what, so...
I just budgeted that if we need stuff next year, I can, again, this is all user fee, if I don't spend it, it goes right back into our, none of it, nothing we're gonna talk about till my last one is county dollars. It's one hundred percent either grant funded or our project income, which statutorily has to be spent on our staff or clients, and if we don't spend it, it just stays in the account. So, just trying to budget that if we need something, we've got some money there.
Okay.
I'm good. Motion?
I move that we approve fund eleven twenty-two as submitted minus salaries.
Can the salaries go forward as a part of the income?
That's what I thought.
Uh, we pay off the salary scale, our advisory board's on that.
Can I do estimated?
And he's not asking for any, that they're more than what is in there.
I would like to revise my motion. I move that we approve fund eleven twenty-two fully as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All close, same side. Thank you.
Uh, eleven forty-eight?
Hold on, hold on. Which one was his?
Two thousand.
Can I just, can we move to, can we just, because his is the same?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I know the two thousand?
If you wanna approve those salaries.
Because there's an exact same, can, there's a state? Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I just...
Two thousand.
The reason why we did, we thought, we was asked for two percent. What can we do? So, is there a motion to go fully?
So, I scratched that.
Scratch it.
Because it has the new position, yeah, that's what I thought.
Steve was about to get it, he was like, I got mine for everybody else.
Are you eleven forty-eight?
What?
Are you eleven forty-eight? No, okay.
What's funny, you wanna go to?
Uh, nine-nine-eight-seven?
Yes, there's F, okay.
Probably one that goes in.
So, hold on, this is, it's user fees, right?
This is a grant, and I want to make sure, I want to talk about it a little bit.
Can you do?
Well... You put the auditor in charge of making bugs, it's what happens.
Can you project it?
You guys have?
She has stuff.
Can you do a different one?
Do you have nine-nine-eight-nine?
Yep.
We can circle back to nine-nine-eight-seven.
Then while they do the, you can project the other one, and we'll sit back to it. Alright, nine-nine-eight-nine.
Nine-nine-eight-nine is our big Department of Corrections, Community Corrections grant. This is entirely grant funded, we have to spend everything that we get, we can't spend more than that, and if we don't spend what we get, it goes back. A pretty good portion of our salaries are paid out of that. You'll see that there is still rent money coming out of that. I know Sherry's been involved in those conversations, our plan is to continue to pay some portion of rent, because the Department of Corrections will give us that money, so there's no reason to leave it on the table and walk away from it. So, those are the, those are the two expenses in that line, is the rent and salaries. Again, those are grant funded, those aren't county general dollars.
No, on the rent, you've been paying it back to the county before, where you've been at the K Bay? I know we had a discussion about this.
Yeah.
Will we settle on?
Yeah, so, the way it's gonna work, and this is really, I think, between us and commissioners, but the Department of Corrections will pay fifty percent of our rent, but we have to match the other fifty percent. So, now, going forward, the commissioners are going to pay fifty percent, whatever thirty-nine times two, seventy-eight thousand dollars is going to be our total rent for our new space at the Justice Center. Thirty-nine thousand of that's gonna be paid by the commissioners, so it's not coming out of my fund. And then I can articulate to the DOC that the county, they don't care who in the county pays it, as long as the county has that buy-in, then they will send thirty-nine as well. It's, my understanding, it's, it's in kind, it's not...
I get it, I get that part. Where, we just gotta show it, so. We need to show it on, do we have to show that on the balance sheet somewhere?
And then Sherry, that day when we were upfront, I think the conversation, if I remember correctly, was that it was gonna come out of the commissioner's budget somewhere, and basically just write back to them, because that's who writes the check.
I get that, but are they looking for us to show something that we actually gave, that they just, hey, it's a, we can have an MOU or something that says we gave thirty-nine? And then for his thirty-nine thousand, where does that go back to?
I write that check to the commissioners.
Right to county general? Okay, that's what I was saying.
Do we have an MOU?
That's what I was saying.
So, we need to, is that a to-do for us?
We have a contract that needs to be revised between Community Corrections and probation and commissioners, but it has not ever been done.
Probation is left out, they can't pay any more stuff.
Right, well, and that's why they need, the contract's only, yes, yes.
And just to be clear, they, we pay that per month, because that's how we get our grant money, is per month, so I don't write like one big check for that, it's five grand.
Yeah.
And just, and that's already coming in, you're getting a check, they're sending, they're sending a check?
We've been paying that for fifteen years.
And it just comes to the county?
I write the check every month, they send me the grant money, then I write it out of my, out of ninety-nine-eight-nine, I write a check to the commissioners.
Okay, alright. Is that it for this one?
That's it.
I move that we approve fund nine-nine-eight-nine as submitted.
Second.
Is that effective?
That's the salary.
Oh, minus salary.
It's the same thing.
But it's grant funded.
Yeah, but there's no...
State mandates.
Okay, I just make sure, yeah, it's all brand new, because there's, this is the first time anything's come out of this particular fund.
It's, it's because of what we just explored.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah, but still, nothing, and no adjustments to it, okay. Okay, sorry. So, you had a motion to approve as? As seconded, yes. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All close, same side, thank you. Can we project your other one or not?
Nine-nine-eight-seven.
Nine-nine-eight-seven.
Kathy's written for me.
Oh, okay, alright, perfect, okay, perfect.
Uh, can do?
Nine-nine-nine?
Yeah, nine-nine-nine-one. This is our jail treatment money. The entire amount of the grant goes to pay our service providers, if we don't spend it all, it stays in that account for the next time around, there's no salaries out of it. The one-twenty-five-oh-forty is exactly what our contract is with in-will and inspire, to provide jail treatment program out of jail.
Okay.
Motion to approve nine-nine-nine-one as presented.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve nine-nine-nine-one. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, all close, same side, thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Alright.
Yeah. Nine-nine-eight-seven?
Somebody must have pulled. Coming our way.
It doesn't have all the colors.
Yeah.
Everybody got one? Alright.
So, nine-nine-eight-seven is our Justice Partners Addiction Response Grant, this is another grant that we get through the state. This pays some of our SIM grant salaries, pays for a case manager in our office, also pays for the defense attorney for drug court, and for pre-trial or meaningful first hearings. We have some initiatives in that grant fund as well. This is a grant, now, I want to be clear that because of the timeline of everything, we have not received final confirmation from the state yet for nine-nine-eight-seven. The amount budgeted is the amount requested. Here's the hiccup, if for some reason they were to deny our grant, I would come to you and say, I will pay this amount out of project income for one year, so that I'm not throwing you a curveball that you're not budgeting for. But next year at this hearing, I would have to come to you and say, this is a state mandated program, pre-trial is not my problem as your Community Corrections Director, it is a state mandated program. I can cover it for one year, but it makes no money, it does not in any way allow me to pay those salaries long-term, but there's seven hundred and fifty people on pre-trial that need supervision. So, if they didn't fund this grant for some reason, which I don't have reason to believe that they wouldn't, but I think it's important every summer to have this conversation, that if, this is one of those magic funds that the state has put in place, that if they decide not to fund it one day, the council's gonna have to, because I do not have the money. Between this one, and we're getting ready to talk about nine-nine-nine-two, which is the exact same situation, if those two grants went away, I could cover it and get us through as a county for one calendar year, but then I couldn't do it any further, but those programs have to stay in place and be functional.
And that's fair. With, with the timing on your notification, what do you typically do?
The nine-nine-eight-seven, which we're talking about, I was told mid-September, Ashley had a talk, a conversation, we had a financial report due last week that she submitted, and in those conversations, they thought it would even be another week or two earlier, so sooner rather than later, but I was just kind of planning on mid-September for nine-nine-eight-seven.
I was gonna say, that's what we're gonna need, is kind of mid-September this year, so.
Again, what, what I'm proposing is that we, you accept nine-nine-eight-seven, and the understanding being that it will either be paid for out of the grant as submitted, or Community Corrections Project Income, which has a very healthy balance at this point for exactly these types of situations, could cover it for one year, but then that would mean next summer, we have to have some tough conversations and figure out where that money's coming from.
That's fair. So, with this, it would be, I see the salaries and how they're paid out of this?
According to our minimum, everybody in my office pays the same way.
Okay. So, I would, so we just approve this minus salaries?
Or?
We approve it.
What salary?
What salaries on this one? I move that we approve?
Can I ask, sorry, it says right here, salary INCR five percent.
That's, yeah, that's just printed on every time.
Oh, so it wasn't, the five percent was or wasn't added to this one?
I, the, a number I submitted is what they should be paid according to.
The state, okay, okay, sorry.
So, it's all, so I could just do this fully? I move that we approve fund nine-nine-eight-seven fully as submitted.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All close, same side, thank you.
Nine-nine-nine-two, Michael was just unappropriating mine.
Well, this is where the new grants, they're making us have that grant.
Second.
Remember, they made us, they made us separate the pre-trial and the center.
And you see, this is similar to what you just?
Nine-nine-nine-two is exactly broken record of what I just said. It's a grant we're funding or applying for, it will pay for salaries within our office. If it's not funded, we can cover it for a year, but that pre-trial staff that it pays for has to be, has to be employed by this county.
Okay. I move that we approve, I'm sorry, anybody got any questions? I move that we approve nine-nine-nine-two as submitted.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Can I interject before you both, just so I can be one hundred percent transparent? There's some, in this one, we are requesting an additional pre-trial staff member, which, so if it's granted, that's, we need the new person, which is what we're requesting in the grant. If we don't get the grant, I can pay for a new person for the year, but I think the conversation in between you and I is, are you willing to take that person on going forward? Are you gonna tell me I have to keep supervising seven hundred and fifty people with two case managers?
That's the standard motion.
That's, so, that's why I wanted to say that before you got it.
Let's talk about this. So, my question before we, we do anything else, was this line, it's just all in one line in parts unappropriated, we need to broke out.
This used to be part of nine-nine-eight-seven, it was all, it was two different grants, but both from the state, so we put them both in the same, they both, and they're all paying for pre-trial staff, so it makes sense to just all be coming out one. Like, all good things, the state got involved and decided that we needed to have a second fund, so here we are, and when we did it earlier this summer, Debbie said, just for the time being, because it was so close to the, to the budget hearings, if I remember right, we're just gonna make an unappropriated line, so you can start getting your staff paid out of the right line, and then we can create lines if they approve the grant for next year.
So, of this one-fifty-seven-nine, how much is this for a staff member? How many staff members?
That would be two staff members plus benefits.
I would have never known that.
They pay their benefits.
Right.
See, and keep in mind, this program's required by the state too.
I get that, yeah, but like you said...
And there's no reason to doubt that we're, I mean, I, I feel very confident we're going to get the grant.
I get, no, I'm with you, but in the event that you don't...
But I'm also not, I guess where I'm coming from, I'm not gonna hire somebody till I know this. So, if, if we don't get this grant, I'm just gonna come back to you and say that number needs drastically reduced, because I can only afford to pay one person, not two, plus then you're not on the hook for that second person going forward.
But should we? But going forward, just, I mean, we've always said with grants, if, if the grant fails, I mean, there might be one, we just talked about, it's the state mandates that we still have to pay for, but if the grant fails, then technically, you know, that person doesn't have a job.
Yes, and that's why I wanted to have this conversation, was to make sure...
And I think that's the way we go until, when somebody makes a case and, and the council decides to fund it, so. It's definitely subject to the grant.
We can't put seven hundred and fifty cases on one person, just throwing that out there.
But that's something the council's got to be deciding.
It shouldn't be all two people.
Right, isn't there a case management, like?
Yeah, we're only like quadruple what it should be.
Yeah, that's our thought, so.
So, that being said, I mean, we do have a motion to approve it, and it's still, no matter what, it's still subject to the council actually.
And you should know before the adoption in October.
Yeah, so this is another mid-September.
Yeah, this one was actually, they told us that yes, is, yes, it's the short.
So, is it?
Should have known a month ago, but we just haven't gotten a response yet.
Is it seventy-eight thousand five hundred times two, or is it a hundred plus fifty-seven? You know what I mean, like, is it somebody that's seasoned, and I don't want to pull, I don't want to specify anyone, but what's the average, is it, is it, is the average?
Because there's, well, so another big part of this too, is that we pay a defense attorney out of this for their time with the pre-trial cases.
Wait, or requires?
So, that's not all salaries?
It's not all salaries, I found it's a little bit messy, that it's, it looks, it's not all salaries, it's...
Because that's contact.
See your point, Kenny, we'll just get it broken out.
It could be here the lines in nine-nine-eight-seven, defense attorneys, training initiatives.
Is that something I could go forward, that we had a? Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, if, if they find in the next month and a half that they're not approved, we go back and...
I feel like that was our conversation between Debbie and I, was we not trying to get the part too far ahead of the horse, if they don't give us the grant, then this, this just gets watered up and thrown away.
So, we got approval now, then we just have to come back, we'll know at least by September, close enough, hopefully.
As soon as I get answers, I'll let, I'll let you know.
I, I think you'll definitely know by the October adoption, yeah.
Yeah, because this is the October, October. So, there's only, it's in October, yes.
We do have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. We had discussion.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, we had, we had discussion, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All close, same side. Thank you. Good discussion, though. Thank you, Kelly.
Yes, appreciate it.
Twelve-thirty-three, he does have a line in twelve-thirty-three.
Yeah.
You got a good line, so we need that one. What's his line?
So, twelve-thirty-three, I believe mine ends in four-four-three, I can't count.
It's two hundred and fifty thousand at the bottom.
Yes.
It's at the bottom.
So, do... I can give that, let me let you do it, it's your, okay, I'll let you do the exercise.
Yeah, so, the way the, the Justice Center has all shaken out, I know you guys met with the sheriff yesterday, a major, originally it was gonna ask for sixteen people to try to do all of that under Community Corrections. It's been determined that the sheriff will do basically the correctional officer piece of that, so that takes that off of my plate, which brings my number from sixteen employees down to four. The reason that I'm requesting four new employees is so that I can have someone on staff twenty-four-seven to deal with the case management part. I think you heard the sheriff say yesterday, their role's gonna be safety and security, our role is gonna be program management, so it's not gonna be his staff's determination or worry if a client should be leaving for work or not, that's gonna be up to my staff to check their schedule, approve their schedule, do all of their case management. We're, our plan is to hire degree level staff, so that in theory, we're not competing for those same employees for those same employees that the correctional officers piece would be competing for. So we would hire four new case managers. The the idea would be that one of them would work, so we already have staff covered Monday through Friday, eight to four. These four employees would work, one of them would work four PM to midnight, Monday through Friday, the other one midnight to eight AM, that would cover us the entire work week. And then the other two would work three nine-hour days, either Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or the other one, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Sorry, three twelve-hour days, I, Paul, I misspoke, three twelve-hour days, that would get them to their full work week, plus cover us twenty-four hours a day. The only hiccup or caveat would be is this does not allow any room for vacations or holidays. So Christmas Day, Community Corrections is just not gonna have anybody at the facility, but that's not a huge deal, because the safety and security's on the sheriff.